Okay, so, yeah, so what I'll do now is outline what the borough was supposed to do with the, the funds. So, the borough wants to allocate sixty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars to a homeowner utility assistance program. And basically, the program would pay the arrears of homeowners' utility bills. HUD regulations only permit going back three months for that program. Currently, there's three hundred and thirty-seven people at the point of having their, their, um, their, um, utility, um, shut off. The other thing, the other program we want to fund is an emergency services response program, an amount of forty thousand dollars. What this would do, provide, um, an opportunity for emergency service providers to submit, um, reimbursement for costs that incurred in response to COVID. They're required to respond, prepare for, um, COVID activities. Um, and again, if it's an eligible cost, then this program would help them meet some of their, their costs associated with their, their service. And then the other activity we would, um, propose funding is forty thousand dollars to help the borough meet it, the costs that it incurred in response to COVID. So again, this is something we funded last time as well. And finally, fifteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars for planning administration of the COVID funding. Um, even though it's a small amount, um, the CDBG regulations apply to this funding source. So as you're well aware, there's a lot of administrative and overhead and reporting and documentation required, um, any type of CDBG program activities. So again, the grand total of assistance, um, that we're looking to allocate is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. So once, um, we go through this process, take public comment in, come back to Borough Council, request their approval of the amendment, and then submit the amended, um, action plan to HUD, again, for their review and approval. Are there any questions or comments? None? Sure. Yes. That, that is correct. There's lists of eligible activities you can undertake with public grants funds. And then, but every activity that is funded must meet a national objective, which means it must benefit low moderate income people who are, um, provided a immediate urgent need, um, and/or address a somewhat bloody condition. Again, on top of that, then we have to document that this activity responds to events in the COVID. So again, there's, there's no layers of review on top of that, and they will see the activity. Utility cost. Okay, so as far as detail, we've not gone down to, like, again, I don't think you want to approve cable, those type of utilities, so. Susan, how many sure if you have anything to add in that regard?
Any type of relief through, through a grant program. So ultimately, I was looking at it as a priority to make sure your water, um, remains on, you know, and looking at our utilities, uh, you know, we have, Richard has reported out previously, uh, the amount of, um, arrears that we have, uh, in total. And I think the last that he reported out, we had arrears in, in the, or devoted four hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, you know, I, I agree with Chris. I don't believe, uh, HUD would allow the, the cable, but, uh, you know, if we want to look at electric and gas, I would suggest that we first make the opportunity or put the invitation out to individuals who are, um, behind on the water and sewer and stormwater utility here.
And another, um, thing to be aware of is the borough would like to deal with utilities since there's other programs across the county that deal with rent mortgage issues. So they've looked at a gap, and that gap existed for the borough.
Any, any other questions?
If I may just say, Ed, I'd like to take this opportunity, first to thank Chris and his staff. Uh, they are instrumental in the communications between our office and the HUD office with respect to what uses we can and cannot use the monies for. Uh, I'd also like to say that once we get this program, um, promoted to our borough residents that are homeowners, we will continue, we're committed to continuing to work with the redevelopment and housing authority on rental properties and getting that information out to tenants and landlords about the rental assistance and utility assistance monies that are available through Chris's team. Uh, I think, you know, it was, if, if you read the article in the Sentinel, you had, I believe, thirteen million at one point for this program, and there is still, uh, a good amount of money left in that program. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes.
And then if you recall, I'll just take you back one more step. Last year, uh, with our initial round of CDBG, CUB dollars, council put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the street to small businesses to help with recovery. That too, those small businesses could use those funds for utility bills, being behind in rent, mortgage payments, et cetera. So I think this is just, uh, another way that, you know, you've been very thoughtful and strategic with the limited funds that we have received to, to putting the best juice forward for those, so.
Any other questions or comments? The next step is coming before council and getting your approval on this proposed, um, action plan. Again, as I said, once we submit it to HUD, then hopefully they'll prove it in a timely fashion and get the money out on the street as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
August workshop, we're probably yet. And I've been reminded by staff, please use your outside voice, so the cameras, so the microphone is going to pick up the voice, and we can have one of these. All right. Um, I'm going to take a motion to commit council member Francis to participate in a public communication in this meeting because of which Francis' actions should be directed toward a court trial. Special, although in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, it's happened, motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Francis.
Can we speak later, about later your agenda after we listen to it?
Well, I have, uh, public enough. This is the joint special meeting and hearing of the pro-council communication. Um, tonight's all right, uh, tonight, uh, we're holding a joint public hearing to receive public comment on review, discuss, and consider changes in TRC's mission statement, bylaws, and action plan, and possibly take action on these matters and any other matters that come before the TRC Borough Council or both parties. We already did our call to order, and we move down to item number two, TRC mission statement, bylaws, and action plan discussion. If you'd like to take this on.
I, I guess, I'll, I'll jump in, and then we can, um, just, um, to the communication. We had received, uh, proposed bylaws from the commission. They had been reviewed by the borough solicitor, who had made some, some comments. Uh, those comments have been cast out to the commission. We created a red line version that incorporated the recommended changes, um, that to, to address the comments. Uh, and in that aspect, it was supposed to publicly, a live version, uh, the commission, uh, available to the comments from the director and the solicitor. Um, and I think most of the comments, at least in the discussion, exchange that by, by email, um, the attempts to, to the commission members, co-chairs, uh, wanted to start, uh, in this help hand, and, um, and analyze it, that most of those, most of those revisions were relatively acceptable to the commission, but there are a couple of barriers that we want to focus on. Uh, one that I'm going to resolve relatively quickly with a, with a motion to council, uh, which is the, uh, the question that this solicitor had, whether the, the resolution permitted co-chairs, um, as opposed to a single, a single chair. In fact, that, that the restory of the commission, that my, my, uh, my interpretation of it was here we want, and we'll make it work, and so we're going to make that, make that work. Uh, the, the, the second, uh, major issue is that, uh, in the bylaws, it would allow the commission to remove its own members, uh, but a, a body cannot remove, or a body cannot, cannot appoint, so that the solicitor's comment is that that final removal should remain, remain with Borough Council. We made some revisions that made it a recommendation under the commission and council removals is necessary. Uh, and I think we may, may want to have some discussion on that, how you might want to, want to work, work through that. Uh, those are the only real major issues unless there's, there's something additional that the commission wants to identify in those new provisions, but I'll public it with the co-chairs.
Uh, so, I think, uh, a lot of the changes, um, make sense, and, um, I do want to acknowledge Kendall Isaac for the work that he set in drafty means to make them fit, um, what the commission has been passed through, uh, part of the resolution, and also, um, just taken for his time and effort, and I'd be back on this. So, the, um, the, the amendments and those, you know, additions and red, I, I think they're acceptable. I think that they make sense. Um, the only thing that I would, um, probably say we want to have some conversation about is, um, under Article eight, session two, on voting for a removal of a member. Do, since we're at Article seven, and one person would be removed, they could talk about it, but they can't vote. So would we want to indicate that a super majority or unanimous decision of the voting members would be required for the, for the removal to be recommended to council?
From my perspective, I think a majority is still sufficient. Because, to me, removal is a, is a pretty substantial thing to do. And, um, if there were a sixth, then that would take four to, um, make my math, yes, um, to, to be able to recommend removal to council. And, and I, and I have absolutely no problem with, um, council's addition of, of it coming before the bodies. I think what you said, Deputy Mayor, makes perfect sense, that the, um, council needs to approve that anyway. And it gives a second, uh, look, so just in case we did something improper, it, it will be able to be looked at and decided upon in a proper manner. So I, I have no problem with it myself.
Do we need to address if there's, if there's a split? Or, like you say, that a majority is required unanimously, and there's a split, then that's irrelevant?
Correct.
I'm playing the lawyer on TV, just trying to make sure there's no gaps in there. Do they want to have anything else to add? I, I'm not sure if Doreen Wilbert is the assumed, or she might have anything to add. Is she on the Zoom?
She's not.
Okay. So, we're good.
Okay, so all those changes, uh, there was one other, one other issue on the, on the amendments. Um, this solicitor had suggested that amendments would come back, um, to the council for approval. Some of them are over there now. I'm trying to read back, back through the, that section. I think the way, the way it's drafted, I mean, I, I prompted, um, we can have that escape, but it doesn't make that much of a difference, um, to me. I think the idea is we were doing this sort of almost jointly, and then if you were to go back and sort of got the bylaws, that we proved sort of the, the process that we were going to do.
I'd probably just want to add to, um, just for the record, that the piece about co-chairs was something that we talked about as a commission, um, recognizing early on that it's important how we do things as well as what we're doing. So, um, I just want, hope that we noted that we're not taking this process as something that we're doing that would be similar to any other sort of commission because of the ways in which we need to dismantle systems and structures and work in square and face and figure out how we can do it differently and be an example of that, everybody. So, um, so I appreciate council's special work with that and allowing us to do it the way we prefer.
Okay, then I will, if, if, then although the revisions are acceptable to the commission, I will, I'll make a, first make a motion, um, to clarify council's intent under the resolution, I would say the resolution that established, um, the commission to clarify the intent of council that, um, the intent was to allow a chair structure of your, your choosing. So a chair could include, uh, co-chairs. So make that as a motion.
Yeah, it's number three eleven twenty twenty-one, number is motion, for your motion. I'll say.
We have a motion of a second, and you put in discussion on the panel. Gary, none of those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, it's happened, motion carries.
Um, and then we should, we should make a motion to, to approve the bylaws on our end, and the commission will make a motion to approve the revision. So, I guess, well, I'm not sure how to do this sequentially, but I don't think it matters.
Oh, we need, we need public comment too, before we
Very public comment.
Okay, so it's time to I'm getting there, I'm slow. So I'm Rick Copeland. I'm not a resident of the borough, but I am a resident of Dickinson Township. Do just a little bit of business here in Carlisle, and I'm here as a concerned citizen, not as a school board member. I don't represent the school board, I don't represent the school district. But I want to say, number one, thanks for this opportunity to address you. I strongly support these efforts. That's my first, most important message. I strongly support everything you're doing here. And I suggest a small, maybe it's too late, but I hope not. I looked at, I, I must admit, I had a chance to read the mission statement and the action plan and all that today. And I have a one small suggestion for an edit on the mission statement. Is it too late for that, or hopefully not, for consideration as you move forward? Okay, all right. Let me provide a little context first, because I think it'll be more appropriate that way. Um, my grandfather was born in Mexico. He was a South Texas cattle rancher with a seventh grade education. And he fought against discrimination for much of his life. My mother was born in McAllen, Texas, right there on the border. She faced discrimination as well. She spoke Spanish long before she spoke English. As a young girl, mi madre extraordinaria, that's my mother, my extraordinary mother, was actually told at a public swimming pool one time, "You cannot swim here because you're a Mexican. You're a Mexican." She went home, she told her dad, and he didn't get angry, he got busy. And he organized an economic boycott in that town of the very predominant Hispanic population. And a few weeks later, my mom and her sisters, her four sisters and her brother, were swimming in that pool. So I'm not advocating economic boycotts in Carlisle, that is not my point. However, I learned an awful lot from my mom and my grandfather, and I'll tell you a little bit about that in a minute. Um, but I would, I would highlight, you know, one of the things, her dad was really far ahead of it at his time. He had four daughters, and this is the nineteen forties and the nineteen fifties. And he said to his daughters and his one son, "You must get a college education. You must get a college education." That was unheard of at that point in time. Well, my mom, her sisters, and a brother did get a college education. I know I'm getting a long way of getting around this, but I'll get there pretty quickly. Um, so I learned a lot from them, but let me provide, you know, the context here. Clearly, we live in exceptionally polarized times. That's not the fault of anybody in this room. We live in, you know, we have divides across racial lines, across class lines, across ethnic lines, across gender identity lines, and many others. And some, I'll call them leaders, seem intent on dividing and conquering us at all levels, and employing what I'll call the destructive politics of distraction and division. So I'm suggesting this time for all of us, and I do mean all of us, community members, board members, commission members, to put that destructive language aside, you're doing that, but I'm speaking to others now, the mindset and approach aside, and replace it with the language of unity, common understanding, shared purpose, and collaborative action. So my wise grandfather once told me, believe it or not, seventh grade education, he actually said this. He said, "Seek not the wis-- excuse me, seek not the eloquence of words, seek the"
Eloquence of ideas and actions, ideas and actions. Therefore, respectfully, in the spirit of my grandfather, I'd like to suggest a small change. Right now, uh, the current sentence
The last, in fact, if I, if I may, can I provide a Have it, but I've got a suggestion, I've got a suggested revision, and it's highlighted in blue. And again, it's not huge, but I think, hopefully, I've laid the groundwork and set the tone for, well, I think this is important anyway, and you'll see, you'll see the words there. So right now, that last sentence, and oh, by the way, I want to highlight, if I didn't make it strongly enough, I think this is exceptionally well-written, the entire mission, action plan, all of it, well done. Just a minor recommendation. So right now, it reads the last sentence, "To develop guidance for borough officials about next steps for making our community more just and equitable through accountability and transformative change." I thought, hmm, that's good, that's very good, but maybe we can do better. Maybe we as a community can do better. So I'm suggesting this language, and you have it in front of you. "To, to develop guidance for borough officials about next steps for making our community more just, equitable, and unified through accountability, transformative change, and collaborative action." So I'm suggesting the addition of the word unity, unified, you've got that. And I applaud those that were part of the Unity Day efforts recently, I was happy to be there. So I'm suggesting that we need to build unity, we need to show collaborative action, we need to inspire action. This is, I think, asking you to reach even higher than you're already reaching, to actually build uni- unity in our community. build uni- unity in our community. Is this possible? Absolutely. I've seen us do it, you know, and I could go on and on, but I won't do that. I commit my full support to your efforts, whatever I can do to help, and I thank you for your time. Thanks.
There any other public comment? Anything on that? Commission like to stack a public comment?
Sure. Uh, so thank you for that feedback. Certainly, it's been the, uh, whole objective of this group to, to really seek input from the community and, and what the community is looking for from this group. I, just some history on the mission statement. We spent a lot of time with the mission statement, really looking at, again, what our task is and how we want to communicate that task, how do we take the resolution, what, what we are able to parse from the resolution as far as the important pieces that, that we really need to do, and then bearing that down to the mission statement. I'll, I'll say personally, and I haven't had a chance to obviously talk to the commission about this, or even, um, my, my co-chair, uh, I, while I appreciate that gesture, while I appreciate the spirit in which that is given, I do think that sometimes we can put reconciliation before truth. And that when we do that, and when we have a, uh, a rather rush toward unity or a rush toward collaboration, we can oftentimes skip the important steps of truth seeking, truth telling, accountability, repentance, atonement. And those are necessary steps in order for our unity and our collaboration to be its full, complete, and authentic self. So yeah, thank you. I think that would be my feedback for, for what you're offering.
I do have some thoughts, but I'm just going to go first.
My, my thought is fairly simple as well, just be quick. I like the word unified, I have no problem with that particular edit to it, but that's, I'm not so sure about, I mean, I, I agree impressively with collaborative action, I think it's kind of, um, built within the language already, I'm not sure that it's fully necessary to add that, but, but unified certainly is an aspirational goal that we should all have. I have no issue with that part.
One concern I have about the language of unified at this moment in time is the discourse in our country around anti-critical race theory bills and anti-divisiveness measures in state legislatures and, and school boards. And so while I personally support unity and agree with Kendall that it's something we should aspire to, I wonder strategically if it's the right positioning for us to include that word. Does it sound as though we're trying to participate in the discourse of people who are actually trying to divide rather than unify, which I believe is the intent of those bills? The language they tend to use is anti-divisiveness, but I have seen some bill worded in terms of unity, and so I just think it's something worth considering, that we sound like we're participating in that discourse, or that we're in agreement with those efforts at the state assembly level, or at school level, to try and curtail the free speech of our, our teachers and in a way that's antithetical to truth telling and reconciliation.
I, I have a thought as well. I think that, um, unity is currently having kind of strange brand because of the comments that co-chair Carl had mentioned. But I think that one of the things that this commission can work to do is make sure it has the correct branding going forward. And I think the same about collaborative action. I think that, um, I think we can, by the actions that we undertake, ensure that indeed truth comes before reconciliation. The transformative change literally does come before collaborative action is possible. I think actually that even placement is, is fine. So I think, I think it's fine. I think that we can take on this language, maybe even model the kind of community listening that we intended to do as a commission, and take this on as a friendly amendment.
Back and forth. I would, to keep it short, because I, I think I agree with, with the direction of, of Emily Tuan and what you're saying. I like the idea of collaborative action because I do want to, I do want to make sure that we are a reflection of the community and what they're asking for as well. But Emily, I would, I would echo your sentiment on the, the unity front.
It's a concern, and it's a question about how we should position ourselves strategically, but I am persuaded by what Rapp said about the influence we can have on, on the branding of unity and division right now, and I do prefer to support it.
I think maybe one comment I have, because I've been focusing on collaborative action because that is necessarily, especially working for a nonprofit, that is, I had a conversation today telling somebody to partner with whoever they can because collaboration is one of the most important movements forward. I think just within this sentence, I look at the first step, because once you're making guidance on how to be collaborative, I, I think I just see organic collaboration, which will, I'm sure, happen through this commission. I'm wondering if telling people, like, it's one of those things where you're telling people to be collaborative and here's how you do it, I'm just wondering if that's forceful, but I think this will be something we'll be doing regardless of if it's in here or not, because, you know, we, we're talking about unified here, but I think one of the first, when we were first meeting, we were talking about like what words are power words, solidarity was one of them. So I think from the get-go, we were thinking that, and I think, again, I am not speaking with any government background to say, you know, whether or not, where that would place us, I can't do that, but I think the spirit will be there. Um, I think it, this is not an answer one way or the other, and it probably is still just the same, um, roundabout thing, but it's just whether or not we include the verbiage in it, or if we just include the spirit of doing it. Um, and I don't know, again, not from a government background, if it is better to say it or do not say it, um, so I will probably yield to everybody else who has a little bit more of a grasp on that, but I don't think we'll be losing that in any way, whether it's written or not, because I think that is going to be the spirit of the commission, is collaboration and solidarity slash unity.
Everybody's starting on that topic.
Yeah, for, for me, it comes down to spirit more than text, which is the direction of mutually influential coordinates or legislation. You can, or pause it and talk about things, which I believe in the mission statement and the action plan, it's into the, the spirit of the time. So the, the words that Rick suggested that we believe are, is a great spirit that I know you live in, and I know where you come from, which, uh, so I, I pretty accept that as, as this is presented, but it comes down to what the, the actions of the commission would show the intent of unity and collaboration, which is actually saying. I don't know if that's a, that's all.
I'm, I'm going with a, a complete no answer too. There's a reason for that. And, and in the end, the mission, as, as you have, have phrased it, is not inconsistent, which was, um, and, and, and I think we ought to give as much deference to the commission as, as possible. I'll also note that I would be incredibly disappointed, um, in having watched all the commission meetings and then hearing the first couple of comments from the commission, I would be incredibly disappointed if Rapp hadn't taken the opposite side. But I, I, I think the, 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 the comments, uh, Rick are, are fair. I would point out that the resolution itself talks about collaboration, um, in, um, for collaborating with existing businesses, institutions, nonprofits, agencies, boards, and commissions. Rick's probably talking about something a little broader than just those, those categories. Uh, I think the notion of, of unity is, is important. But I also, I also believe that maybe this commission is not at that phase yet, and that the resolution establishes that this commission will be in existence at least until December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. That July first of, of next year, you will make a recommendation of us whether the commission should exist beyond the end, the end of next year. And if we, if I remember correctly, that may be discussed during the meetings, that your mission may change, the, the mission of the commission may change at, at that point too. So it may be a, a point there that we would reassess what phase are we headed into, and how does that change what our, what our mission is. So I'm not, I'm not really giving an answer there, I'm just kind of throwing some things out there to, to, to.
Sure, I mean, just, I mean, in the end, I, I think this is kind of your call, right? I mean, you're making the recommendations, what you want the mission statement to be. I also think that, as it's written out, it aligns with the resolution, um, and we're really arguing what our, obviously, mission statements, a lot of people like to talk about them, right? There's, there's a lot, I'm more interested in the action plan, I'll put it that way, and like the bylaws, but anyway, um, in the resolution, item five, under the TRC's scope and jurisdiction, is identifying, analyzing, and recommending to the Carlisle Borough Council institutional and policy reforms meant to mend the wounds caused by, to combat systemic racism. Um, and I think this last segment here, developing guidelines for the borough about next steps to make our community more just and equitable, aligns with that. I guess you could argue that making it more unified does as well, um, but, but again, it's, it's what are, what are those next steps aimed at doing? So in terms of the way this sentence in the mission statement is right now, it's, I think about the next steps for the borough, uh, that the commission is recommending, um, and whether those next steps are aimed at making the community more just and equitable, or just and equitable and unified, um, so just to provide that context. But in the end, I, I, I would kind of defer to the commission's. I do have one other item about the action plan, when we get to that, that I wanted to add, but it's very small, so.
And I too think it should be up to the commission, because you spent a lot of time figuring out the mission statement, and I think these aren't, what, what Rick is saying, I think is actually mostly there already in the, in the entire mission statement. So I think it's really your decision.
I agree with him.
Hi. Once after, you know, hearing everyone, and particularly hearing Deputy Mayor Schultz, um, the, the possibilities of what may or may not happen, um, after this period leading into December twenty twenty-two occurs, I do think that I'm, I still, I like the added verbiage, but I, I'm leaning now towards agreeing with our co-chairs that perhaps now is not the time to add the verbiage and, um, but to hold on to it, because as we reassess our mission, once we get past, um, some of these stages that, that are before us, we may very well want to add this type of language and, and reconstitute if, if that is where we're headed in the future.
Thanks again, Rick, for your feedback.
Thanks for listening and discussing, I appreciate that.
All right. I believe we do have, I believe that the mayor is about to make a motion, but I guess we'll jump in there and choose.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a, a minor thing, but we, council received an email from a borough resident earlier today, um, asking what DEI stands for, um, and I, I, my, my suggestion is just that, I, I, I think most of us know what that stands for, or what BIPOC means, or even TRC. All those acronyms are used in the action plan, but they aren't actually spelled out, they're maybe spelled out elsewhere in the bylaws, but since they're separate documents, I think it might be worthwhile to spell them out and then put it in parentheses the first time it's used in the action plan, just so that if somebody's viewing that document individually, they know what is being talked about, if they don't, so.
That's very reasonable, I think we can make the edit out of the mission.
Makes a lot of sense.
Are there any other, any other discussion on the action plan as it is before us? Okay.
Just, um, really excited about this commission and the work that's gone into, for, for action plan and efficiency and, and the bylaws, and, um, just the level of professionalism to print, I mean, the selection committee for picking such a very good threshold to really hammer all these processes and really set our sails in the, in the, so.
I'd just like to add that kudos to all of you on this, because, uh, from attending the meetings, it seemed like early on, your, your conversations were pretty nebulous, uh, and you, you did a really good job of like, um, getting, getting to, to a more concrete point and outlining what you're looking to do, so I, I appreciate that. And, uh, from where things started, I think you guys really narrowed down in, in a good way, not, not to say that they were bad, but you know, you know, you kind of started off, you were talking about all kinds of stuff all over the place, and I saw this as like, good job.
You don't have to emphasize that.
Yeah.
All right, so I think we go for the discussion on the mission statement, bylaws, and action plan. I believe you should have a motion.
I think, I'm, I'm reading back over the resolution, um, and, you know, I got through it into the, the details of the bylaws and everything, I forgot to go back and think about the process that we're going to do tonight. The, the, the resolution itself just says that the, the mission statement, bylaws, and action plan would be, um, submitted to council, that we then have this meeting. And it doesn't actually talk in terms of council approving any of them. Um, so, so I think what we'll do is, well, first, I think the commission needs to make, make a motion to accept the, the bylaws as, as revised, um, and then, uh, we'll, we'll make a motion to, to accept the bylaws, um, the action plan, and, and the mission statement.
Got it.
My move, that we, um, accept the bylaws as revised and, uh, accept the, uh, friendly amendment to the action plan as well as proposed by councilor Stube.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Now entertain a motion, uh, for council to approve the bylaws, the, the, the call, truth and reconciliation, commission, commission statement, bylaws, and action plan as approved by the truth and reconciliation commission, like we said, as well. So, so we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The eyes have it, motion carries. I believe that would last. Any, any further comments?
No, just thank you all for your time, and we'll be back.
Thank you all for your time as well. We are adjourned. Thank you, Glenn, what's everybody? We can announce the meeting in five, four...
We'll be talking about the seal, though.
We'll be talking about the seal, though.
Six forty-two, have arrived, I'd like to call this caucus workshop order. We've already had a call order, and if you have to grant you are there any, anyone in the audience who can be heard?
What?
There's not.
So it's not, okay, and no one up on here? Okay, we're going to read this, entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion for, motion to approve the minutes, if you may, the second.
Second.
Motion to approve the executive, any further discussion? Here are the ayes and favors, signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it, motion carries. entertain a motion to approve the June 30th, 2021 city meeting, these public hearing meetings.
Second.
Motion to approve the second, any further discussion? Here are the ayes and favors, signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries, thank you. Under Mayor Porter, I have a proclamation for COVID awareness day. At the state and local level, most of the governments and government leaders have made health of their constituents a priority by taking this as their steps to provide the community with updated climate information on COVID-19. Our healthcare workers have sacrificed their own health and lives to care for our communities. Essential workers put themselves at risk to make sure our country had the necessities to shelter in place. COVID-19 has impacted our low income communities of color, making them the most vulnerable population to be affected by the virus. State mandates targeting prevention to help prevent the spread of COVID-19 by social distancing, wearing masks, and staying home. Symptoms related to COVID-19, very many individuals, while long-term side effects of those who survive COVID-19 are still unknown. Furthermore, many survivors are still suffering with lingering side effects of the virus after they've been hospitalized. Here are the numbers, more than four million people worldwide, over 600,000 in the U.S., have lost their lives to COVID-19. In the Cumberland County, over 500 lives have been taken by COVID-19. Each loved one lost to COVID is more than just a number. The absence of our loved ones would forever be felt, and are now part of this year. Therefore, I, who Dave Scott, Mayor Carlyle, the half Carlyle Borough, and Carlyle Borough Council support the designation of August 7th as COVID Awareness Day in remembrance of those who've lost their lives and honor those still fighting. Thank you. Now, onto the discussion of our recognized county members.
Okay.
Good health, so.
I was trying to pull up my PowerPoint, but I guess I'll just read it off of the Sure.
Oh, we need the PowerPoint.
Yeah.
You gotta have the PowerPoint.
Okay, this is, this has been on my agenda for years, and I've sent an email with all of this information to many people, and I'm so grateful to have this moment to talk about our seal and talk about how we can choose to retire it and understand how it came about. And so the question here, we're going to start and look at it, is do we want another seal that is an option to actually redesign a seal? There's the, you know, the option of not having a seal, that I will talk about this, of how it came about, but it didn't we didn't have this until 1956. So it's not that this has been here since the beginning of Carlyle. And so our seal is also our flag, so this is also a flag discussion. And yes, we're going to talk about good design, so, and bad design. And so this is what our seal is, and so if we go to the next slide. This is the Carlyle Police version of it. And as you can see, the detail has been lost, and I call this the MS Paint version of our seal. I know you want it gone, too. So it's, yes, there's, I mean, it's just here just to just take in for a moment. So this is what we see, but a lot, but most of us don't know anything about where the seal came from, so we can go to the next one. This is very small, and you can go to the next one, because I do bring it out a little bit more. It was a letter from
Frank Maslin.
Frank Maslin to the mayor, and actually, it was to the mayor of Carlyle, England. And so this was basically the description of how William Edel, E D
Edel.
Edel, thank you. He was the president of Dickinson College, chose to design this. So there's, you know, there's a grouse on top, there's Dickinson College, there's a frontiersman, and a Native American. Molly, there's great, you know, architecture. So he gives the whole rationale, it's a Pennsylvania rifle. And that's fine that he has outlined what his rationale is, but this came from the Dickinson Archives. I talked to the archivist, Jim Garenser, and he was able to provide me these documents. If we can go to the next one. So this is a little bit about who designed it. It was designed in 1956, he was president of Dickinson College from 46 to 59, and a trustee. So he had a lot of background, and, you know, Dickinson is on the top of our seal, does that necessarily symbolize what we want either? I mean, I work at Dickinson College, it's a lovely place. But, you know, there's many different questions of why there are things on there, and how it came about. And so if we go to the next one. This is his autobiography, I can go to the next page. And in it, it says that he goes to Carlyle, England, and they were talking about seals, and they didn't have one. And so while they were there, they were basically saying like, oh, we should create a seal, and then they could have this carpet, which is the carpet that's in here. And so send one to England, send one, and keep one here. And so that is how we have gotten here. It was basically, they saw Carlyle, England's seal, we didn't have one, and they decided to create one so that we could be equal, I suppose. So this goes on, says that they took it, he got to meet the Queen in 1958. And then there's a little funny on the next one, because she asks, is that a turkey? And it's a grouse. And so it is an interesting story, it is part of our history, but at the same time, I have not been able to find any information that this was well-vetted by council, or the public, or any sort of large process. So this now is on our webpage, it's on all of our documents, it's on our police uniforms, and how it came about, and what it truly symbolizes, and does it, you know, as we talk about truth and reconciliation, does it actually reflect what we want to promote within Carlyle? So we'll keep going. Okay, this is my pitch as well. So if we're talking about the seal and maybe choosing to not keep this as something that we put on all of our documents, it's not like it would be something that wouldn't be in our history. But again, it's choosing how we want to brand and promote our town. And so this is, this is what I've watched, and we're not watching it, it's just a screenshot, but I do recommend you watch it, because it's fascinating. So city flags may be the worst design thing you've never noticed, but now you're going to notice it. And so we'll just keep going. Basically, he has outlined what good flag design is. Keep it simple, use meaningful symbolism, basic two to three colors, no lettering or seals, and be distinctive or be related. And so we'll keep going there. There's even a 16-page guide that we can follow, so we're not like, we're not going at this by ourselves, and we'll keep going. This is just a quick example of another town that they've looked at, that had a seal that was their flag, and how they interpreted it to something completely different. They didn't have to take elements from the seal and create a new flag out of it. They simply started thinking about what is it that we have here? So this was Lowell, Massachusetts, you can see the seal. But their new vision was red, white, and blue flag with an upside-down V shape representing the curve of the Merrimack River around the city. Eight white stripes represent the eight major canals, and nine red stripes represent the nine Lowell neighborhoods. But it's very simple to see, and it's very understandable. That's just an example, but thinking about something that can be iconic, and we'll keep going. DC has an awesome city flag, and here's why that matters. So when you find a city that has a really great flag, people wear it with pride, and they wear it as a badge of civic pride and engagement. So I think that we have an opportunity to have something that people can connect with and resonate with, and it can be more symbolic instead of it being, you know, obvious, you know, and very detailed with what we already have. So we'll keep going. They did do a city survey, the vexology, I forget what the actual term is, but they did a survey in 2004 of the best and worst flags. So Washington was number one, Chicago was number two, and Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, and Harrisburg were in there. They didn't rank all flags, but basically, we failed on all the other ones. So we would be in that number, you know? So we'll keep going. This was the worst flag in America that year, and they chose, it was a, you know, 1.48 out of 10. But that town in Idaho rallied around and said, no, we're not the worst. And they found a different, they chose a different flag, they used those qualifiers that they recommended. And this has happened again, so we'll keep going. I promise I'm almost done. So they also did one for state flags, number one was New Mexico, the worst one was Georgia. And then Georgia also did redesign their own flag. Pennsylvania, we come in at a 3.69 out of 10, again, because it has a seal on it, and no one can draw that. We'll keep going, I found this one to be very funny. The Patriot News even chimed in, jeers to Georgia state legislators who unwillingness to take a stand resulted in the North American Vexological Association to have the worst flag in America. But yet, we did not rank very well either, but we have not changed our own state flag. Keep going. Okay, so this is my end. If we're tempted to look at it, here's the trick. Start by drawing a one-by-one-and-a-half-inch rectangle on a piece of paper. Design it at those dimensions, and held 15 inches from your eye, it looks the same as a three-by-five-foot flag on a flagpole. So I'm not advocating for kids to draw our flag, please understand that. I love children, but I don't want us to just chop this out to the community. I think that there's a way that we can use really great sound design input from the community of what are symbolic, or what are interesting and thoughtful things that we want to have. But I do think we need a flag. I don't think that the seal is representative anymore of who we are. I don't have a statement of what it should be, but I do think that this is the time with, especially with the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, to start to address this, so there's many different ways that we could go about it. I mean, we have, there was some talk about Yes, an RFP, to have some sort of design knowledgeable folks help us guide through that process. But thank you for listening to my TED Talk. But I thought a visual would help to understand how we could go from one thing to another, and they don't have to be exactly the same.
I agree, but at the time, it's like, especially the TRC coming on board, and if you do make this an RFP, it would be more of a synergy, it's not just for points, so
You know, I agree. We talked about, I really hadn't thought about it until we had the chief plan this, before he was chief. And he mentioned, he mentioned, I was the honor director, remember that chief?
Sir, I do.
It was very animated, which shocks no one. But I think it's, it's time for a change.
Yep.
I think the opportunity is ripe, as the mayor mentioned, we have the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. We are an all-American city, darn it, and I think it's time to rebrand who we are.
The 1950s seal is a very 1950s object. We are not in the 1950s, it's 2021, and it's time. We need to have something that's representative, but also lively and a
And so we, I don't, and that's why we, we talked about what we were gonna like, please don't put the seal up, and we didn't, and we won. And now we're good.
Counselor Ramsey, any final thoughts?
Hey, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I think to Counselor Hicks's point, um, I'd love to continue this discussion, and I thank Counselor Landis for bringing it up. I, I, I agree with a lot of what was said. I do think we need, we need something, um, you know, that identifies us and that people can rally behind, and that's kind of a, a prideful item. And I, and I think a lot of times, when you look at communities across Pennsylvania, a lot of local communities adopt, um, you know, their local high school colors, uh, or potentially symbols, um, from that local community. And I think, you know, in my time here in Carlisle, it, it is a little confusing, um, when you look at, you know, some, some of our logos and things are Dickinson-related, which is fine. Um, and then you have, you know, uh, the Thundering Herd logos and things like that. Um, so, you know, any way we can incorporate, um, the community. And I was actually, while, while people were, uh, talking, looking at some other communities in Pennsylvania, I think, um, you know, there's some things we can draw on, uh, but I, but I think this is a good process. And I agree, you know, the, the current seal, I, I, I agree, has to go. Um, and I'd be open to, you know, if we do keep a seal, what that looks like. Um, and I know the Borough Manager has also brought up to us, you know, I, I kind of like the idea of, um, something that can be tailored toward departments. Um, so maybe it's a, it's a logo, um, where the color might be different depending on what department's in. So for the Police Department, if the patch still needs to be teal, um, you know, maybe it's the Carlisle New Logo, um, that's teal, but maybe Parks and Rec is, is green. Um, so, you know, happy to have this discussion and looking forward to, uh, continuing it and, and getting rid of, uh, hopefully getting rid of the current, um, logo. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Ramsey. Does staff feel like we have enough to go on with this?
One, one last note on the, on the seal issue, doing the lawyer thing. I pull up the Home Rule Charter. Um, the whole Home Rule Charter actually requires the Home Secretary to fix the official seal requirement, the official copy, the copy that exists. We didn't, unless we're going to try to amend the Home Rule Charter, which technically has. Something that can, that can also be a seal.
Seal, you could just say Carlisle.
It can, it can. Hopefully we did something.
Right.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, next we'll move on to redevelopment.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes? Great. All right. I have, uh, one item tonight. It's the Hamilton Commons Subdivision and Land Development Plan Extension Request. Uh, so I will make a motion that Borough Council may approve a 78-day time extension request by Burgett and Associates, Inc., on behalf of Hamilton Commons LLP, for considering and taking action on the final subdivision and land development plan for Hamilton Commons as per Section 226-21A2 of the Borough's Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance. The new deadline shall be November 19th, 2021.
Counselor Ramsey makes a motion, uh, asking Council to approve a 78-day time extension request by an applicant for a land development plan. Is there, what's been said? Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this matter?
Uh, on the letter that requests the extension, it says we're pending the contract until November 19th. Borough Council meeting. That is not real council meetings, so. So I don't know if this is gonna be made.
Yeah, the, the, the meeting is, is seven days before that. We have seven days after the council takes action to send a written notification to the, to the developer indicating council's action. So that was the reason for that, that time placement.
So, which would mean we would expect an update on November 19th?
Which is your meeting?
Okay.
Thank you, Attorney Mark. Uh, any further questions, comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close, the ayes have the motion carries.
Thank you very much. That ends our report.
Thank you very much, Parks and Recreation.
Okay, uh, we, we have an update tonight on, um, the Fairground Avenue Linear Park. Um, do you wanna?
Sure.
Yep. Okay, so since, um, June 30th, um, we've received conveyance of Lot A and D at the Fairground Avenue Linear Park area, and we received an extension to the, um, for the DCNR grant for the Fair, Fairground Avenue Linear Park. Um, we received that extension, that'll, that's extended until June 30th, 2022. So that does kind of put us on a pretty fast timeline for design and development of Lots A and D. Um, originally, you know, we had talked about the, the Fairground Avenue Linear Park pretty much since, I think, two, 2017. So it's been, you know, we've talked about it for a while. Lot A, we've, uh, talked to, that it was going to be a skate park or, you know, um, some version of a, a skate park. And Lot B was going to be more of, sort of more of the traditional park, um, you know, with traditional park elements. Um, so, since we got the conveyance and the grant extension, we've kind of been on a fast forward, um, to get things moving. Um, in order to get the grant extension, we did contact FSA to develop initial concept designs. And, um, so we submitted that, we had to submit that to DCNR to get that grant extension. Um, after we got the grant extension, we talked with FSA to, um, to go ahead and do, you know, design, per, uh, do a contract for design of both Lots A and D. They did provide us the contract, and the, the one that's in your green book, the, the contract is just a little bit updated, um, from that. Um, the fee for FSA's contract is $39,000. It includes the, um, design and construction drawings, bidding for, um, the skate park and Lot D. For the skate park, FSA doesn't have necessarily the technical background, um, for the skate park, so it's their intention that they'll contract that out or subcontract that to a, um, skate park design firm. Um, they, they feel like they have, you know, they have the skills to do Lot D, which is the traditional park design. Um, just this week, uh, we've launched the project on Engage Carlisle. Stephanie was a, um, we launched, you know, the initial design concept for Lot A and Lot D. Uh, we've gotten a lot of public feedback on, um, on Facebook, too. I think there, I think it was up to about 70 comments. Um, we've also got, um, some feedback from, on Engage, too. There was quite a number of contact, or, um, comments. Um, so if you're able to go on and look, there are on two separate, you know, the, and one is the skate park, and the other is the, um, traditional park. It's kind of weird. We call it the Fairground Avenue Linear Park. Lot A is in one corner, Lot D's in the other. They're not quite connected yet. At some point, we hope that they'll, they'll be connected with Lots, um, B and C. But, um, so anyway, we've, um, gotten a lot of public feedback so far. Um, the plan is, you know, we'll, we'll get the public feedback on Engage. We do have two upcoming Parks and Rec Board meetings. Um, I, we have on Engage that public comment time is due September 15th. That's kind of in order to get some, you know, initial comments of what to do. Um, I'm envisioning, I, I don't have this quite worked out yet, but I'm envisioning, uh, you know, taking those comments, kind of figuring out, okay, um, you know, for the skate park, what direction we should go in. For the, um, Lot D, what kind of, you know, cool things did people come up with? And then maybe sitting down with FSA, drawing up a, um, concept plan, and, and that would all be, you know, discussed within the Parks and Rec Board. And, you know, maybe FSA would design the initial plan, and then, um, you know, we could launch it to the public, um, in some way. We do have up to three meetings with FSA for, in our contract for that, you know, design. Um, they, you know, they, they know about the Engage process, so they know there's, you know, a public process to that, so, um, that's, that's about where we are. We are gonna, and, and as well as getting it out on Engage, we are gonna try to get it out to the public, or we will get it out to the public in some other way. You know, where, whether we put it at the library, or however. Um, people who don't have internet access get that information to them. So that's, that's kind of where we are. Um, I know that it's been, the FSA contract was rushed. Um, but the fact that they are, they will be subcontracting the skate park section. Um, we will be listening to what we hear on social media, what, you know, people are telling us, um, in public meetings. Um, we will be listening to that, and my thought is that we'll provide that information to FSA so that they can kind of develop and design things. I know we're gonna not make everyone happy because, you know, we cannot put all of the elements in that everyone's suggesting. But, um, you know, according to what our budget is, according to how all, everything flows, I, that's how we'll have to decide, um, you know. With the skate park, I know that's more of a specialized area, so, you know, maybe we get a group of skate park people who are really concerned and, you know, want to figure out what that looks like, you know, we could meet with them, have separate meetings. You know, from there, it would be something that, um, you know, we could do in staff time rather than the design phase, you know, time. So that's kind of where we are.
So I have a couple of questions. One, um, you know, we, we approved fundraising effort for the police for their, um, their dog recently, and, um, I know that we're limited on funds, and, um, uh, and so I was wondering if there is an opportunity for us to solicit funds from the public, and if there's a way that we could set up something like that. Um, especially because I do know that, uh, you know, people have been, have read the comments, and they, you know, there's one group that's really excited about this one, and one group that's really excited about this one. Um, and I think if there's any way to, to, uh, help boost our fundraising for any of that can help, um, make a, uh, the best, the most effective, um, uh, parks design. Um, uh, I had a question about the skate park size, um, because Lot A looked like it was fifty, like 5,000, 5,500 square foot, but that's much, but the, the actual skate park size looks like it's way smaller than that, so, um...
What I have is 55 by 85, 55 feet, by 85 feet, and that's like 3,000 some square feet.
Um, okay.
That's, that's the, that's the number I have, and we are working with some manholes out there, too.
Yeah. Um, and because I know that, uh, you know, we are, we don't, we don't have Lot B yet, but, um, Lot B doesn't have anything, you know, like, once it's filled in, right? It's not, is it always gonna be that depression?
Okay, it's up to us to determine.
Got it. So, this-
Could it be expanded?
Right, right. So if, if, uh, successful skate park, small, something happens, um, just like Stilton started with one spot and then expanded on. Um, so again, this has to do with funding, so the more people that are interested in something and can help us build the best possible option, um, and I, and I do think that it's really important, um, especially for skate park, because, you know, people have used, uh, some of them. Um, but to, there are, uh, there is a community that will, um, you know, make sure and take care of it. It's just, uh, you know, they aren't quite like the pickleball folks, and, but, uh, we can get them together. Um, I have one more question. Um, oh, so, I mean, the, the, the main thing I had a question about on, into actually taking action tonight, um, uh, and possibly waiting until next week to take action on it, is because we do have the Parks and Rec meeting tomorrow, and I do really appreciate our board, um, in, insight and feedback. Um, and I understand that FSA is going to, you know, subcontract, but I'd like to understand what that process is. I mean, I understand that we can have feedback from the community, um, but, uh, is there going to be a process where we know where, like, who they're subcontracting to design a skate park? Because it is very specialized, and, and that's why it is really important to have the, the community feed, uh, feedback from skaters who know exactly what works, what doesn't, and then also understanding what a qualified skate park designer is, 'cause it is a very different thing than, than other places. So that was my big question, is I don't really feel, right now, I understand that process fully, and I want to just make sure that we end up with the best possible design.
And I can't tell you, I 100% understand that con, or the, how we're going to do that, but I could certainly ask FSA, um, but I do know, with working with them in the past, that they're very open to, um, our ideas, and, um, they would be open to suggestions on how that they would go about searching for the, a skate park person.
Uh, so did you want to table this?
Well, I wanted to, can we ask if there's any comments at this point, too?
I have a comment, I have a comment.
Yes, yes.
And it's probably, this is, this, Susan and I probably spent too much time alongside each other here at the Borough over the, over the years. Um, as I'm thinking it, I get a text message from her about using, potentially using ARC funds for recreation improvements, and I think we ought to, um, to the extent it's not too late or we can, or we can, um, sort of boost the concept, look at potentially using those, those funds, because I know when we, early on, we talked about it, had some concepts, some of the concepts for the Linear Park were probably much bolder, um, than, than what it is now. And we have an opportunity, perhaps, um, to maybe not make them quite as bold as they were at, in, in these early conceptual phases, but, but move in that direction. So I think we ought to explore that, too.
Which funds were they? I'm sorry, I missed one.
The, uh, American-
Rescue Plan.
Oh. We have yet to, uh, pub, actually have, uh, any discussion on those funds. Uh, however, I think it was, uh, the police council's directive that I begin working with the mayor and deputy mayor, looking at potential, um, areas that we may want to allocate funds for, recreation, climate action, et cetera. So that's, that's where the thought process is going at this point. No, no dollar amounts assigned to anything, but, but, uh, the overall, meeting councils overall.
That would be great.
So I was thinking, is June 30th, 2022, is the obligation fund not extended?
No.
That's-
We have to have the project completed by June 30th of 2022, correct?
We are intended-
Yes, June 30th of 2022.
This is- Yes, this grant, uh, actually DCNR has been a wonderful partner for the Borough of Carlisle, been very receptive to our needs throughout the years and our questions, and, uh, we, we have a very good rapport with them. They've been very receptive in the past to extending this grant, and, uh, they've done so, and was it-
This is the sixth time, or the sixth, it's three years, and then we've extended it.
So, and they can only extend one more year.
One more year.
We only, so-
This year.
Six, six, six year will be up June 30th of 2022.
We can add a question, however.
Pardon? No, no, we requested everything we can get.
Literally, I, so, sort of looking at a timeline, get, agree who's gonna do the design, approving the design, any updates, RFPs, rebuilds, the timeline looks onerous, but, no.
We, and-
It's aggressive.
It, it is aggressive, staff's aware of it, but we are doing our very best to try to make sure that we stick with the schedule that we provided to DCNR in order to, um, obtain that extension that they approved. And, uh, I don't know, Mark, if you have any, anything more to add to that brand as far as Lots A and D?
The only, uh, thing I'd like to add is that, from the standpoint of the schedule, it's incredibly aggressive, but one of the things that slows us down is permitting, and there's no permitting. It's broad, no permitting involved in this project.
I, I'll just add, you know, if doing something less efficient, lower risk, actually being able to use funds, I, I would find to be oppressive to, um, using the funds for something beneficial.
Certainly, and, and I think where my thought process was, and I haven't even had an opportunity to discuss it with staff, was, uh, you know, our primary focus is Lot A, the skate park concept, and Lot D, because if you recall, Lot D also is adjacent to the new build that's occurring there with respect to Kenneth Townhomes. So one could only assume that, you know, if you're, if you, if those townhomes appeal to you as a homeowner, it would be nice to at least have an idea of what's going to take place in their backyards, correct? Uh, for the ARC funding and a more robust concept, what I see is, this could be phased in. Remember, we do not have to expend the American Rescue Plan dollars for, I forget how many years, Richard's not here to keep me straight.
2025, right?
I, I believe so. So, you know, we have Lot B, Lot C that we have yet to obtain. So what does the concept look as? I, I look for this to organically evolve through the years, but for now, I believe the concept should, you're, you're absolutely right, Counselor Hicks. You know, uh, the robust, uh, plan can, can come much later once we have, um, our finances fleshed out in a clear direction of where, what, what we envision for that entire park.
So, so for staff, given the residents of this, and I know that it may be the desire of some council members to take this, would that have a negligible effect on the business of the unit if we don't take that?
I think one week is not, I, 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 I actually had a conversation, well, we communicated by email, but, uh, and I know Brenda and I had a, had a commu, communication as well. Uh, I do think that, uh, the concerns that were raised, certainly as, um, as Andrea noted, we don't even have clarity as far as what does that look like? That relationship between Frederick Seibert and, and the skate park consultant. I think the week will give us time to get that clarity. Also, as, uh, Brenda noted, Parks and Rec Board meetings tomorrow night. So Andrea, you were, you were fine with that week, correct?
Yeah, um, I think that's fine. I do know, uh, I'm not sure I'll be able to get an answer for the Parks and Rec Board meeting tomorrow night from FSA, but I could probably get an answer, uh, by next council meeting, although I won't be here, but I'll email it.
That's fine. It was more of allowing Parks and Rec to also weigh in, ask additional questions, and if there are additional questions to take to FSA, then we can just, it's just to make sure that we get the best contract. I'm really guessing we're gonna, you know, send it through next week, but just in case there are any tweaks, like, I think that just outlining those couple of things would be really crucial, just to make sure that also, that, you know, the community feels like there's the right buy-in and that we're doing this transparently, and, um, you know, we really appreciate feedback. Um, was there any feedback, by the way? Is anyone, can I-
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I've been sitting here, and I'm like, experiencing some business, and I'm really trying to figure out what it was, and I just did. Um, so I, like, I hear engagement, and I hear transparency, but I also know that part of why I'm having been sitting right here is because this borough has historically had a problem with parks in that neighborhood. And I'm sensitive to that. I just would hope that we are extra intentional, overly intentional, in the ways in which we engage the community on what happens with their community. And even where engagement isn't possible, or transparency isn't enough, that we're looking at what this actually means for the people who don't say that about us now, or what, what could this be perceived as, right? Being able to look at this from all different angles and, and approaches to really analyze what it means for today and what it'd mean for the future, you know? Um, so I'm just really sensitive to our approach with this, sort of.
Our, our, our approach is always, as I was saying, these are public discussions, the public is invited, Parks and Rec is also public, uh, Councilor Landis will be there at a meeting at home station, you know, the week, talk about the future. So I, I, I am actually concerned, and I appreciate your enthusiasm. I think it'd be, I think, I hope, if we don't, that it's up to you to understand that.
I think one of the, just to push that back, one of the, one of the challenges, um, that, that we talk about, um, with TRC, is how do we reach people who don't want to be reached? Like, how do we engage people who don't want to necessarily engage, but they're still affected by the decisions? And how can we give thought to that, and provide space for that, and have room for that? That even if someone doesn't show up to a public meeting, or if they're, um, maybe they don't vote, maybe they don't, whatever, they're the least civically engaged individual, they still have, um, they still have a voice, and they're still a person in their full humanity whose, whose rights and, 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 and residents should be respected at every cost. And so I just, I'm, I hear you, and, you know, I, this building has been here as long as I've been alive, and millions have been held here as long as I've been alive. And we, I mean, we see this, we see it tonight. And I think that, in some regards, engagement in, because of the ways that the systems and structures that support the borough have, in some se, in some instances, alienated people from that feeling of engagement, that some work has to be done to repair some of that, right? So that's part of the work of TRC. So even as we're, you know, we're, we're doing the work of TRC, the business of the borough still has to go on, but I still have to do things that, that a borough has to do. So I'm merely just dropping a crumb and saying, hey, just remember, part of why we're here is what we think is engagement and what we think is transparency. We not always be perceived as such, our bills are most vulnerable on us.
I agree. Uh, I have been, rags by that problem the last 20 years. Now that we get the opportunity to use that, all borough, what we, what we say, what we represent, that I always have a suggestion, I have a part of the neighborhood expansion, I need to see much more colleagues, um, meeting people with it, but, so we'll, we'll, we'll go back, I mean, um, I mean, we'll just, um, so, yeah.
I've hand-fliered all along those routes when we had the old, uh, urban redevelopment meetings, so like the big ones, and so I did everything I could to get all the neighbors to know. This before I was on council, so no, I did not do it, 'cause it, we only, I, for, for the Parks and Rec meeting tomorrow, but, like, things like that, I, I mean, I've also had the borough, um, add, you know, actually put out paper flyers in certain neighborhoods when we, when we did, so, I mean, so great. Believe me, I want all the people to know, and I want them to be engaged. And I also see other underserved populations like skaters. Like, you know what I mean? Like, there's like a whole bunch of different groups that have been, you know, kind of marginalized, right? Or they're, they're not taken seriously, and lots of, in, for a variety of reasons, and, you know, obviously, some are much stronger and, and more important than others. But the point is, is that I do want people to know, and I want them to be thoughtful and ask good questions and be part of the process, because that's the reason why, if we just sort of throw a skate park in and no skaters have ever weighed in, then it's not gonna work. And if the residents don't know that what's gonna be going in, we talk about Kenneth Homes, but at the same time, all this housing on Fairground, they all get to benefit, too. So knowing what i, is gonna be there, um, and, uh, yeah, so I'm all, believe me, I'm there with you.
And that sounds like a great topic to talk about tomorrow night during our Parks and Rec Board meeting, how we get that word out, and, you know, do we do, go door to door, do we do door hangers, whatever? That's a good topic to talk about.
Do you have any other comments before we move on?
I see more table?
Um, I would, yeah, I was going to, but I was just gonna see if any public comment had anyone saying it. Okay, all right. Then I make a motion to table this. All right, then I make a motion to table this, uh, till next week, um, for the action item for the FSA, um, contract.
Councilman Landis makes a motion to table, um, the second, the second.
Second.
Motion has been made. The second item, any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll call the question. I'll those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oath, the ayes have it, motion here.
Thank you very much. Second being reported.
On the public safety, I have two, three, after some, uh, first, you can, you're welcome to. I move that, uh, council adopt an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Carlisle, adopted by ordinance number two zero four two in our common end, with respect to chapter two four four vehicles and traffic, to add one on street handicap parking space at one sixty-five West North Street that will join the existing space at one sixty-three West North Street. In order to align these spaces to be close to the front of the president, the residents, the existing space at one sixty-three West North Street will be moved eight feet east of its current location. And so, second, the motion has been made. Second item, discussion?
Just to thank staff, getting on this because it's something that popped up on the next tour. Um, and I saw people were having arguments over the space and, uh, and this is going to help resolve, resolve that issue. I pass that on to staff and staff jump in on it. So, okay, thank you.
All right, this being an ordinance amendment, the roll call, and Secretary, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Ms. Fulham Winston?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Lan, Ms. Landis?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Scott?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to you. Thank you, everyone. My next item, I move the council authorize the borough solicitors to draft and advertise an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Carlisle with respect to chapter two four four vehicles and traffic to prohibit parking of unpicched trailers at all times on public roads in the borough. And so, second, the motion has been made. The second item, I understand this was not brought to us by residents along-
Ridge?
Rich, Rich Street, but it's a problem in other areas in the borough too, not just Rich Street. Now, police officers are very capable, but they can't do what the ordinance has allowed. This now gives them power to check it for those unpicched trailers.
So I do have a question, um, because I, I drove by one just yesterday, it was a landscaping, uh, trailer. And, um, I've seen, um, like creative design and cloud, uh, construction. Like, there are just two that I've seen around, around town. And when they're working, they do sometimes have their truck, their, their trailers there. And I can understand why, because they're gonna be coming in and out. So I don't want, um, I just want to make sure that it's a balanced, uh, process to make sure that we're not, um, you know, there's one issue right now, and I understand that we're having a problem. But at the same time, I don't want to, like, be overt, like, just, you know, bring the hammer down too hard and make a whole bunch of other people have to deal with it. So if they're act, if it's someone that's actually doing work in an area, is that, is there something in here?
Yeah, because, so, so typical ordinance will have exceptions for, you know, work trailers that have been used affirmatively.
Right.
That's not what is going on.
Okay, so, so that is not, that's my question. So there, there is something that would give these folks that are doing work in a particular area an exemption for a period or something?
Correct.
Yeah, that, that's the intent.
Okay. Okay, then as long as it won't be a bird. Okay.
All right, I'll call the questions. I'll those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oath, the ayes have it, motion here. And my final item, I move the council authorize the closure of a section of Terrace Avenue between Shirley Avenue and Tack Avenue in the Valley Meadows area of the borough for block party to raise funds and awareness for local nonprofits focused toward children in the community taught by Lifehouse Church of God, Wednesday Office eleven twenty-one from six P M to nine P M. Lifehouse Church of God will be responsible for minus percent of the terrible costs and ten percent of the biggest costs of this event and certificate of insurance leaving the Borough of Carlisle, the church insured. This event will be held in the church parking lot, as well as the section of Terrace Avenue directly in front of the church. The address at fifteen thirty-four Terrace Avenue is the street directly in front of the church, in Shirley Avenue and that. And so, and the motion is second. Any further discussion? All the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oath, the ayes have it, terrace, and, of course.
Yes, I'm delighted to ask council to approve the purchase of Polara Audible Pedestrian Crosswalk Signals from Signal Control Products Incorporated of Souderton, Pennsylvania for a not to exceed cost of twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program to equip the intersections of West High Street at West Street, College Street, and Cherry Street, and the intersection of North College and West Louther with audible crosswalk capabilities.
Councilwoman Fulham Winston moves that, uh, council approve purchase of audible pedestrian crosswalk signals. The third is second.
Second.
Motion has been made. The second item, any further discussion on this item? You remain none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oath, the ayes have it, motion here.
And that completes my report.
You're much for a new business, uh, do you want, you're here for a hall or ultimately have a new business to bring before council? All right, thank you very much. You go for me of this.
So, um, as the Chair of Climate Action Commission in coordination with the Climate Commission, um, we asked that the borough staff, uh, consider coming back, um, in September, um, to plant, um, to, that's one of the priorities of the Climate Action Commission. But it's also been brought to my attention by a number of citizens and, uh, interest groups to look at, uh, the possibility of reducing the amount of single-use plastics and certain types of containers, um, that would, um, have, I think, many potential benefits. Not least of which is, is our emissions, but all of these are waste footprint and the, that's down on, uh, a lot of disposal, specifically being, uh, uh, viable, uh, waste. So, um, if, uh, there's no objections, um, I think what the mission and both commissions would simply be interested in here, maybe in September, either at the workshop or at the council meeting. It's just a, a timeline for we, um, that we come back with some recommendations about how to reduce our, for no objection.
Anything else from council? Anything else from our T R C?
Anytime.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Anytime. We always like company.
Anytime.
We have a minute. We will be ready.
Certainly.
We are turned. Thank you.
First to have company.